Members of the board, members of cabinet, at the request of the board member, this item has been added. I am passing down some information that would be helpful for the conversation. In addition to the numbers that you have on the handout, I will add that I apologize if I may have misspoken. Membership for ASBA is July to June. We are currently paid through June of 2022. Membership is based on our each district's annual budget. It's 0.25%, quarter percent of the operational budget of the membership districts. You can see here that on the spreadsheet what some of the expenses currently are. Obviously, conferences, registrations, workshops, that's optional. May not ever happen. It might happen depending on if we go to those conferences. Annual membership, you can see how that has increased. And again, that goes based on the each district's annual budget. The policy support, the policy support provides legal services for statutory and other policy advisories that help districts to maintain their policy manuals. Board Docs is the web app that you're currently using. It's our management system for our policy and for managing board meeting agendas. That is a discounted rate. All of the Board Doc, Board Docs clients are membered, registered through ASBA currently. So if there's a change in membership that would result to, as Mr. Hicks indicated earlier, it's over $10,000. So there's a procurement process there to go after those additional monies. And you see there advertising and other policy and other items. Our policy handbook, Mr. Hicks might need to help us with the policy handbook, where those items are for expenses. But essentially, if you remove the conferences, we pay about $25,000 a year currently. So with that information, I'll let the board have your conversation.
When you see that the Board Doc cost is just over 10,000, do we know what that cost is without the ASBA discount?
Madam President, we have inquired about that. We would have to, and we understand, contact the Board Docs company directly. Typically, what we were informed is that they would, it's negotiated. So they'd come and find out what services are provided. We have, as you can see on your, on your agenda form, we use some functions of Board Docs. They have additional functions. We can have more or less. So they would basically, it would depend on the package that we purchase.
Yeah, because here, I mean, and like you said, it could have to do with the purchase of the package, but Board Docs LT is 3,000 a year. I'm sure we probably use a bigger package than that, but...
Our current package is called Board Docs Pro.
Not listed.
So I have reviewed Board Docs from other school districts that, you know, just the public view of it only. And it seems much more complex than what we have here in DICER. It's a lot busier. So I'm wondering if potentially we would have a cost savings with buying Board Docs directly since we don't subscribe to all of ASBA's policies.
Madam President, again, the cost to go with them directly is unknown.
Okay. And can you describe the policy support cost again? I'm sorry.
Madam President, members of the board, Policy Services, or as it's titled here, Policy Support, provides a very valuable service to each district whenever there is a law changed or a new law is passed. Currently, Arizona School Boards Association staff, which includes attorneys, develop policy advisories and sample policies that they distribute throughout the different districts. DICER has our own policy. It is not the template from ASBA. But our policy is located and managed by ASBA. So we don't have the template, but if you go to the directory of districts, you can see all the member districts' policies and our, I believe our policies are part of that. It's a great assistance to Mrs. Brown when it comes to the formatting and the management of changes. But primarily, it's their, their legal staff that interprets the laws passed by the legislature or any other AG opinions or, and provides sample policy for, for districts to use. In the past, our district has considered those policies if it's based on statute, and we typically adopt those as, as proposed, as suggested. There may be some policies that are more based on opinion that we don't adopt because we try and keep our policy manual very streamlined to what is required. And we have a lot of processes, but we maintain our own process manual.
How often would you say that we dismiss these opinionated policies?
Madam President, members of the board, if there were 30 policy advisories, there might be three.
Because a lot of them are based on law.
Madam President, I mean, Ms. Swerstinkbo, yes, the majority of the policy advisories are based on law. Many of the statutes that passed, that pass require a board policy. It might say, "The board shall develop a policy to..." So, yes, most of those are based on laws.
Except for the part where they redline the policy about not teaching that you're biased because you're a certain race, gender, sex, you know? ASBA recommends that. We get rid of that. But, you know, it's just things like that that have me concerned about ASBA.
Well, kind of what I had said the last time when we were talking about NSBA, I just feel like ASBA has, has really changed over the years. When I was first elected to the board, it was 2006. I remember going to my first ASBA conference in 2006, and it just, just had a completely different feel. And it seems like for an agency or an organization that's supposed to be nonpartisan, they are so far one way. And whether one way is the right way, one way is not the right way. The point is, it's not, it's supposed to be nonpartisan, and it seems like they're so politicized and there's such an agenda. And then to not take a stand against NSBA's action was really disappointing. And it just, it's just not the same organization that I really, I mean, it's a sad day because I used to really enjoy their conferences. I've met a lot of amazing advocates and people, and slowly, those people are no longer there. And with the recent separation with their attorney, who I have a lot of respect for and was amazing, I just can't help but wonder. I just, I just, I don't, I don't like being associated with an organization that conducts business the way that they do, especially if I'm going to have to pay them to be a member. And in a sense, I just, I cringe a lot of times when I get their emails because, again, they're so politicized, and I don't want to be associated with that. And right now, we are. And it just doesn't, doesn't feel good to me.
I'm sorry, Ms. Pritchard, I thought you were done.
No, I am done.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you there. You know, even, I don't know if you guys have attended any of their online trainings, but when we did new, new board member training, and even with some of the other trainings, you just hear constantly about bad bills, bad bills, bad bills. Like Ms. Pritchard said, they are nonpartisan. It's not, okay, so this bill is in the, is in the legislature. Here are some of the repercussions for this. Here are some of the repercussions for that. Do what's best for your school district. There's just a constant push to go this particular way. And even the emails we get, it's just constantly, constantly, constantly. And it's like, why, they do not reflect, I don't feel like they reflect our board and our district's values.
And they didn't stand up for our parents.
No.
You know, that, that's the biggest piece. And to pay to be a part of an organization that stands behind another organization that would make such a blatantly disrespectful comment just isn't, I mean, you're, I don't want to be associated with that type of mentality. That's my opinion. I don't care to continue our membership with them.
So I, I do have a couple of questions for the board. Has anyone contacted ASBA or invited ASBA out here to state as to why you're feeling this way? Has anybody contacted ASBA?
I have not done that myself, but in November, there were several senators and representatives who did contact Dr. Harrison Williams from ASBA. And there was a response from her, but she completely ignored the question or the issue, which was about NSBA and their actions and how do you feel about that? Maybe you should, you know, no longer be a member of NSBA. They were asking ASBA to, to depart from them. And the issue, the question was not addressed in the response.
Okay. So getting back to that, that letter or the initial letter that started the whole thing, I guess I'm concerned with the regards that we're worried about DICER. We shouldn't be worried about a national narrative or even with the state. We need to worry about what's going on with DICER. And I, I feel that we are trying to take all the things that we have done and throwing them out with that few percentage of the bad things. So I don't think that we should, I don't think that we should separate. I do believe that we should have ASBA to come out and answer what questions that we do have. Put their, put their feet to the fire. Ask them exactly what is going on. Why did they not? Now, it's okay, you know, the legislators made that, you know, they sent that letter to Dr. Harrison Williams.
Right.
Williams, Harrison, I'm sorry. Sent that letter, and, you know, that's, that's what happened with that. But I'm more worried about DICER and what we do get out of, of ASBA. And the cost that will probably, what we're going to have to do is probably hire an on-staff attorney. Because we won't have the legal type services that could end up costing over 150,000? I, I don't know what attorneys make nowadays. And I'm just worried that it's going to be counterproductive instead of, I just think that we need to have ASBA out here and ask them point blank before we make any type of decision. If you're talking about separating from them, is that something that would be right now? Are we paid up for a year? Are we paid up for four years? Two years? I don't know what the...
Through June, right?
Is it through June? Okay. I, I just think that, I don't feel that we should be separating from them. I worry about the district staying in compliance with the policies that are out there, the law. We need to determine who is going to read all whatever comes from legislation. And ASBA right now does all that for us through the policy advisories. So I'm, I'm worried that we have not engaged ASBA to find out why.
Well, and for me, and I understand that, because normally, I'm very much a, you know, if there's an issue, you go directly to the source and you discuss things directly. But it's not a matter of, hey, I heard you say this, and this is the way I interpreted it. What did you exactly mean by that? It's a matter of action. So, you know, we could, I could go in my deleted file and print out every single email that comes out from ASBA about their, their opinion. There's just their, again, the politicized emails that they send out. It's their, it's their platform now. They're a different animal than they used to be. And so there's, and, and the fact that they are still a member of NSBA, so it's not a misunderstanding where I need them to clarify with me. It's just a change in their mindset or a change in their organization as a whole that just has repeatedly, I mean, again, one email after another, it's the same type of political agenda, and they shouldn't be that way. And regarding the legal piece, Dr. Kellis, we have prepaid legal, right? I mean, do we, and if a law, if a policy's changed because of law, then we don't need ASBA to tell us a law change. We would be able to find out any changes in statute. But in, in the event that we still wanted some legal opinion, we have prepaid legal for that, right?
Madam President, Ms. Pritchard, we do have prepaid legal. That's not the service that, that they provide is policy services to take the legislative agenda and translate it into policy. Yes, we do have prepaid legal. They're, they're not likely to do that role.
Well, and not like rewrite our policies for us, but if we, you know, if there's a change in statute and the law says we have to implement XYZ policy, we draft the policy. I mean, we've rewritten all of our own policies that ASBA doesn't endorse. They're not the ASBA policies, but we've written them all. And, you know, if we had any concern about how it looked, don't you think prepaid legal would be like, yeah, there's nothing illegal about that policy?
Madam President, Ms. Pritchard, when you say we rewrote our own policies...
Like Dr. Jandras?
DICER contracted with Dr. Jandras, who, over the courses of a couple of years, developed a new policy manual.
Like even like, I remember Board Presidents Weiwei in the past, he would always bring policies that he would write.
He would write policy. And anybody can write policy as long as it's within the law, we can ratify it. And if, you know, our attorney has, I'm confident that our attorney would give us sound legal advice regarding policies if we wanted to rewrite something or if we take something and we draft a policy and we say, hey, we want our attorney's legal advice. We want to make sure we're within the parameters of the law. I'm confident that our attorney would be happy to help us write a policy.
Who's doing that now? But you keep saying our attorney. Can, are you talking about Ms. McLennan?
I'm talking about the district's attorney.
We don't have an attorney.
The board does not have an attorney?
Isn't that our legal counsel?
Madam President, members of the board, we have prepaid legal through the trust. The trust assigns attorneys based on the case. Our current go-to attorney is Ms. McLennan. Again, it depends on what it is that we, we need. If we are having, having a real estate issue, she's not going to help us with a real estate issue. But the trust has attorneys who work in real estate. Policy services, again, that's one ops, yes, but to take an entire legislative agenda and translate that into policy, that's not the service that they provide.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's a service we can, we can procure. I mean, we, it's not like we have to stay with ASBA because otherwise, there's nobody available to help us with our policy services.
Why not just take the money that we're paying ASBA and pay somebody else just to do policy services?
Like who? Who would be writing our policies? Because technically, that's what our job is as a board. We're the ones that's supposed to be writing the policies.
I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying we can't, I'm saying we can contract out if we need policy, if we need, if we need somebody to help us with a policy and we don't want to go to the attorney, or we can hire somebody to be on legislative watch to advise us if a law changes.
It's a lot of ifs. That's a lot of ifs. And I'm not comfortable with supporting a lot of ifs. I...
But what about our integrity? I mean, what does that mean? I mean, to, to settle and to jeopardize our integrity or compromise our integrity, to be a part of ASBA who is, again, completely, they used to, they used to be a huge benefit. I used to thoroughly enjoy them. They have changed, and they are so different. And I don't even, I don't like being associated with who they represent anymore and how they go about representing us. And so to stay with them when this is who they are, just because, well, they can look at our policies, why not just, and I understand what you're saying, Ms. Swerstinkbo. I mean, I'm not saying be willy-nilly and who cares about the policies. I'm saying they're not the only organization that can do that job.
So who else can do it?
Whether it be another organization that works with school policy, whether it be in attorney services, I mean...
I'm sure there's a solution.
Yeah.
But right now, you don't have a solution. You don't have a solution in order for me to vote to disassociate with ASBA because you've got a lot of ifs right there. And quite honestly, I think we need to be concentrating on the bait, the two issues that we're having right now. Making sure our students over this past year and a half, almost two, almost two years now, that have struggled through COVID or struggled through online learning. That's another issue that we need to get those students' grades and success up. The other issue that we need to concentrate on is, and we've had the comments and the threats and the rumors just within DICER, and it breaks my heart that our kids are being immersed in this type of behavior. And something that we need to go ahead and concentrate on instead of disassociating with ASBA when we have too many ifs. We have just too many that you want to just go ahead and, because you don't like what they're preaching. Okay, then let's call them on the carpet and tell them. How else are we going to get something changed if we don't get to be a part of them to see why? Why did they actually do what they did?
So I've been a part of the legislative conversation with them, and I know others in here have. And for the most part, we are in the minority when it comes to different topics that they discuss. The other point I want to make, though, is I know that our board has been very divided on things, especially when it comes to COVID. ASBA took a stance, a stance that I wholeheartedly disagree with, and they sued our state over it. You know, and that's using funds from taxpayers, from school boards, to support an agenda that, that I don't agree with. So personally, that's not something I can continue to support. I don't know how the board collectively feels about it, which is, but that's why I brought it for discussion. I appreciate everyone's words, and we can still talk, but I do want to just throw out a motion. I move that the governing board take action to discontinue the district's membership with the Arizona School Boards Association.
Second.
Madam President, if I could just ask for some clarification? Could you put a timeline on that?
Immediately? I'd like to immediately. You said that it was through June, correct?
We have paid through June. If, I would just hate to see Board Docs turned off tomorrow.
Understood.
Well, we're paid through, so they should not be shutting it off unless they want to refund the difference.
I'm just...
You know?
Without being members and not having the member rate, yes, we have paid.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, I thought I heard you.
I am going to vote no. And the reason I'm going to vote no is we just pulled an agenda item questioning a budget item for a department for $40,000, and we asked them to please go back and rework that. Now we're talking another budget item that is $28,998. And if we cancel with ASBA, we have no idea how much we're going to spend on policy support or Board Docs. And it could be more than 28,000. It just seems to me like we should do our homework first and come back with, okay, Board Docs is going to cost this amount of money, and somebody to do policy support is going to cost, so that we know exactly what we're voting on.
You have six months, though, to find that information. And again, Ms. Grant, I would go back to, how long do you want to compromise your, our, either you personally, me personally, or as a board district, our integrity to be associated with an organization that views parents the way NSBA does, that is very politicized? We, we talk about, we don't want our teachers bringing politics into the classroom. Well, this particular organization is flooding our district with tons of, with their politicized opinions and their views and their agendas. So it's, it's a matter of principle to me. Like, I can't, we can find some, we have six months. We're paid members through June. So...
So my point is, I didn't have six months to do this. I'm not the one that's bringing this to the table. It seems to me like to bring something like this to the table, we need to know how much this is going to truly cost before we vote on it.
So there's a price to integrity.
It has nothing to do with integrity.
It absolutely does.
We talk about taxpayer money. What if the bill comes back at $50,000? I'm just asking the question. I would just rather us make an informed decision that says Board Docs Pro is going to cost this amount of money. Policy support is going to be this amount of money. And then who is going to lobby for us at the legislature?
I don't care to have them lobby. The things they're lobbying for does not...
I didn't say that. And personally, when you walk in this door, we are now school board members. We may have different opinions on what political opinions outside of this room.
I know we do.
I guarantee we all do. That's the beauty of this. But at the end of the day, we have to be supporting public schools.
And we do.
Then what is political?
Have you read their emails?
Yeah.
You don't think they're, they're politically fueled at all?
Give me an example.
They're caucuses that are, that are divided by race.
They're caucuses. But that has, they asked for us to approve another caucus. That, the legislature has caucuses just like that.
By race?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Ask them.
Both, both state and federal.
They all have caucuses. They have it by race. They have it by political opinions. That's not unusual.
I just don't think we should quit.
But back to my point, regardless of what ASBA...
They're not school board members.
That's right. But regardless, well, their board is. But regardless of that, when we have spent time talking about money and keeping within the budget, and now we're about to approve, and it has nothing to do with integrity. I'm, this has to do with approving taxpayer money for something we have no idea is going to cost. That's all. I'm just asking for a delay, for somebody to check on, I don't think 30, we've already paid till June, find out how much is Board Docs Pro going to cost? How much is a policy support person going to cost? That's all I'm asking.
You have six months to do that.
I didn't ask six months. I don't...
Madam President, I would call a question.
Okay.
It's been a motion made and seconded.
Yeah, and I'm explaining my vote, and I think I have the right to do that.
Absolutely. I've heard it.
And Dr. Kellis, are we voting on the motion as it stands?
So...
If we terminate...
Is this immediately, or do we want to do like end of January?
If we terminate immediately, does that mean everything goes away tomorrow as Dr. Kellis stated?
Madam President, members of the board, I, I don't know. I, I just, I'm curious. We are paid, as Ms. Pritchard said, through June. I don't know if you end membership mid-subscription, what that means. what that means, what services continue if we're not members. So that's, the only reason I ask for a timeline is just for clarification, is the status of our membership and the status of the services that are provided for members versus non-members.
If we do the end of January, that gives us a month to get board docs going for ourselves if we lose it through ASBA by discontinuing our membership. Or we do it immediately, saying we're already paid, and take that chance.
I could agree with you guys to a point. If DICEART had been singled out in anything that ASBA had done, but DICEART hasn't been singled out.
Well, DICEART had a lot of...
They have been singled out.
Hasn't been singled out by, by ASBA? ASBA has singled DICEART out for something?
Yes.
Can you share? I don't know. I'm not, I'm not familiar with what you have. Please, share, because it could sway a vote, one way or the other.
I will say this. Something was shared with me, and maybe someone else can confirm this for me, but I've heard that DICEART was called out recently at an ASBA meeting, that maybe we should do background checks or these things wouldn't happen.
Madam President, members of the board, that's an accurate statement.
Pardon?
That is an accurate statement.
Background checks on our employees.
Employees who have recently resigned or been terminated.
I don't know. I just feel we just shouldn't quit just to quit. It feels like we're doing a knee-jerk reaction, and I have a feeling it's going to bite us in the keister. I'm going to be nice.
Well, my hope is that their actions will bite them in the keister. That's my hope.
And as far as I know, nobody, well, I think there's one other school district that has, and they're in northern Arizona, I believe, that has requested to separate from ASBA. But quite honestly, since we have so many ifs, and I understand your six-months thing, Ms. Pritchard, I just don't want to make a decision like this without having the facts. We told Dr. Dean and Dr. Croto, just like Ms. Grant said, about bring back the information having to do with the student services. I think we should do the same thing. ASBA, have them tell us why. Because I don't think that, DICEART was not singled out, and that's what we have to worry about, is DICEART. Political agendas and personal agendas are supposed to be on the other side of that door.
Well, they're in our email box, or inboxes when ASBA sends them out.
I guess we can, we can...
And it was just confirmed that DICEART was called out.
And in a sense, we were called out, or definitely they were referencing our parents, or NSBA is terming, I guess, any parents that come to board meetings. And I'm not saying that some of the parents that were here that night were not inappropriate in some of their actions, but that didn't represent every single parent that was here that wanted to speak. And according to NSBA, then, those parents that are in our DICEART district are domestic terrorists. And ASBA did not, did not separate from that. They did not cut off their, so to me, it's like guilty by association. They had their opportunity to stand up and address it, and they chose not to.
Again, we're not part of the national narrative.
We are ASBA, that's part of that national narrative.
Yeah. But DICEART was not singled out. And I would have an issue if DICEART was singled out, because I would fight like crazy.
Well, what about our parents, though, Tracy?
Our parents were not, our parents were not labeled as domestic terrorists. Ours, DICEART.
But parents in general were.
I can't, I can't work on generalities.
No, I think they were, because they were referencing a lot of the, during that time, when there was a group of parents going to various board meetings, they're, they were viewing, they were terming those parents as inappropriate and going through a whole list of, I mean, they even, I want to, they've addressed it on emails. I wish I could pull that one up. But basically, that's where NSBA drafted their response of domestic terrorism, was from those parents that were coming to board meetings and wanting to voice concern about parent choice and COVID and everything. And we did have a group of parents here that were, again, not sticking up for every single one of them, but they were angry parents that wanted to speak. And because of the political climate, they were lumped into, according to NSBA, the domestic terrorists. So we did have those parents here, the ones that are being referenced as domestic terrorists. So DICEART was included in that, just because...
You're splitting hairs. I'm sorry. I don't agree.
And I can, I can appreciate, Tracy, because in a sense, I'm in a similar position. Do you think it makes me feel, it makes me feel very uncomfortable as a social worker to sit up here and listen to, or emails, angry community members talk about the social work profession, a group of people that I completely value and identify with professionally and personally. It's difficult. You have deep roots in ASBA. You've held several official positions. You've had, you've been a part of their boards. I can appreciate that it is hard for you to be in this position, but at the end of the day, and I'm coming, speaking from being in that similar spot, you have to try and like, just step away and see it for what it is, and try to put the personal piece aside.
I have tried. I have tried. But again, it's not against DICEART specifically, and that's what I'm having an issue with.
I think the word terrorist was wrong, but the people that were outside that night, banging on the doors, banging on the windows, where we had to recess the meeting and escort everybody out, that behavior was inappropriate. After that meeting, you had to read a statement saying that if anybody came here that was disorderly, they were going to be arrested. I mean, we've had to do that for several meetings.
Not all parents that were outside that night.
I didn't say all.
Or anything like what you saw in the paper or in the news.
I'm not talking about what I saw in the paper. I'm talking about sitting here, listening to them banging on the walls, banging on the windows, you know, let us in. The comments that we heard about people leaving, being called terrible names, the police officer being called terrible names, that's wrong. That doesn't mean they're terrorists. I'm just saying that that was wrong. And because of all of that, it disrupted this board meeting, to where we had to go back there. Then we had, for the next couple of board meetings, have to read a statement notifying parents, even though the people in the audience were probably not even part of it, that they would be arrested if they were disorderly. I mean, all of that is just, keeps compounding.
Well, the...
But back to the question, at hand, we still don't have a dollar figure, and everybody, you know, we've talked about money and staying within the budget. That's my only concern, is waiting for the January board meeting when we have more information, financial information for transparency purposes.
Because, just one thing, you just talked about budget. And I'm thinking that if the dollar amount comes in too high, excuse me, and we separate from board docs itself, I don't think Ms. Brown is going to want to, for us to go back to board packets. Creating board packets and having them delivered to our house like we used to in the prior days. That was a lot. That was a lot. We don't know what anything is, and I just don't want us to make a decision just because we're, some of us are mad at ASBA.
It's not about, I do take a low exception to that. It's not about being mad. This is not a temper tantrum. This is a matter of an organization that is driving their own political agenda, representing us, and they don't, they don't have the right to represent or force a political agenda on us as nonpartisan school boards. Because they are, in a lot of ways, they're our voice. They lobby for us. They lobby for things that we may not be behind.
Well, and I would like to state that terrorist, being labeled a terrorist is a serious accusation. That's not something you're just throwing around. Being arrested? A lot different than being labeled a terrorist. Being labeled a terrorist, you could, the death penalty, life sentence or death penalty, like, that is a huge, that is a horrible, horrible crime. Horrible. That's a lot different than being arrested. And...
I agree. I said I didn't approve the language.
Well, I feel like sometimes we make light of this word terrorism. We make light of this label, domestic terrorists. We make light of them. We just toss them around here and toss them around there. That's a big deal. That's not just something you just brush aside and say, it's fine. We're just going to slap you on the wrist.
I would be right there with you if it was labeled as DICEART domestic terrorists.
Can we call for a vote? I feel like we're just running in circles. Yes. And I do want to clarify, do I need to restate the motion? Okay. I move that governing board take action to discontinue the district's membership with the Arizona School Boards Association effective January 31st.
2022.
2022. Thank you for that. Do I have a second? Or is the second stand? While that's, while we're processing that, I just want to say real quickly, we have agreed to other things, like, like school board resolutions, that have much smaller impact than this.
We're not talking about the resolution right now, are we?
No, but I'm saying we have resolved something, for instance.
Just want to make sure.
I'm saying, generally speaking, we have made statements, we've come to conclusions on things that are national, that have nothing to do with our backyard. I just wanted to Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have item eight. Dr. Kellis?
Madam President, members of the board, members of cabinet, this item was presented at the request of a board member, and I'll let Madam President introduce this item.
Thank you. So next, we have a resolution that is regarding the Arizona School Board Association. I hope that everyone's had an opportunity to read through it, and I'll open that up for discussion.
Question, who drafted this resolution?
I did.
By yourself, or did you have help with board members?
I had a template that I used, but I did everything myself.
You did everything yourself. Good.
If we, do we need to amend this for be it resolved, the Arizona School Boards Association is no longer like, DICEART Unified School District Number 89 will no longer be an active member of the Arizona School Board Association effective January 31st, 2022?
I think that item three should be yes. Item one was really just more philosophical.
Okay, so for item three, maybe we need to add January 31st, 2022? Well, I will move to, take, I will move to approve and adopt the resolution regarding the Arizona School Board Association with the edit that on be it resolved, part three, we add effective January 31st, 2022.
Second. I would like to explain my vote. I would like to go on record that while I disagree with this resolution and will not be voting for it, I want to make it perfectly clear, I do support the parents of our district. DICEART was not singled out as calling our parents domestic terrorists, and I have never and will never refer to our parents as such. Our parents are a huge asset of the 23-plus thousand students in our district. And as a board member, I am always reminded why I serve. I have served for the past 11 years for the success of our students. DICEART thrives on the collaboration of all stakeholders and their voices. We need to focus on what DICEART is doing and not try to change the
Oh, wait, no, I was...
It was dawn.
Sorry, I was...
Motion passes.